Go ahead and call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do we have everybody's name that is called in? We have two phone numbers, one ending in sixteen twenty. Give me a second while I mute you. There you go.
Laura Cunningham.
Did you get that one? And the next one is ending in?
Zero three eight eight.
Zero three eight eight. Jake Ketsner? Jake? Thank you. Did you get that one?
Yep.
Anybody else pops up on there, let me know and we'll try to get them in the minutes as well. So from there, let's go to the approval of today's agenda.
I make the motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you done? All favors say aye.
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 Motion carries. It's now nine oh one. The second consideration amendment to Article twenty-three of Ordinance Number Twenty-nine as modified by the Board of Supervisors. Daryl, did you want to comment?
Yeah. A group of county representatives met with RWE and their attorney last week and were still exchanging some information. I expect to get some of the information from them today and we'll be providing some of the information that we told them that we would provide to them today. So my recommendation would be that you go ahead and table so we can then have the benefit of the information we're exchanging.
How long do we want to table for?
I think a week would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Lance, I'd make a motion to table the second consideration of amendment to Article twenty-three of Ordinance Number Twenty-nine.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? Roll call.
BJ?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye. Motion carries.
Lance, I'd go ahead and make a motion to set the date and time for the second consideration of amendment to Article twenty-three of Ordinance Twenty-nine as modified by your Board of Supervisors for nine oh one AM on Wednesday, July fifteenth in the large conference room of the Hardin County Courthouse or via Zoom meeting.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? Roll call.
BJ?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye. Motion carries.
Lance, I'd make a motion to table the next item for the final consideration.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? Roll call.
BJ?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, I, has anybody else coming in? Okay. Next, I have is the approval of the minutes of five twenty-two and six thirty of twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty-second and June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All favors say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment of seven eight twenty twenty.
I'd make a motion approving the claims for payment as presented dated July eighth, twenty twenty.
I'll second it.
Then moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All favors say aye.
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 Motion carries. Utility permits. I had none. Second very close.
Our work's going pretty good on the road east of William Farrick's house where we are agreeing to buy the land from him and remove the road. Protect it. So things are going good there. Can't complain. Our highway job's going pretty good, too. Ever get rained out? I mean, is that what, two weeks without being able to touch it probably?
Uh, about that, yeah.
Yeah. Things are back going.
But I mean, they found other things to do. They're cutting concrete, getting stuff ready for those pours.
Yep, yep. It was good.
Okay, what else say up there? We're going to pick up quotes.
Yep. So I did my research that you wanted last week and nobody had a problem with the GMC. That's still my recommendation is to go with the GMC.
You did answer the question to me that it is independent on the front side.
Correct. Yep. And yeah, we know it costs a little more, but it has more things than this base price than the Ford did, so it's all worth it.
What are the, not to put you on the spot, do you know what all the changes were?
Just little things here and there, you know, when you look at the draft build sheet. Quality of life things. I think they built that air conditioning though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And radios.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the GMC from Dale Howard.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I would still prefer going to the Ford for the reason I said with the front axle and the lower cost. Any other discussion?
I think the difference in cost was what, like twenty-five hundred dollars?
It was like fifteen hundred.
Fifteen?
Forty-three, forty-six to forty-one.
Or nine thirty-five.
Or nine thirty-five. And they were both that Howard's low.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Are you any, are you no other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next is the Time Citizen Media Partnership for General Election. Just, and Jessica speak, I'm assuming she has this on her.
Hello?
There you go.
Good morning, Jessica.
Hi. Can you also unmute Tony Baranowski? I know he was on here.
I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay, perfect. So I'll let speak, but just to give a little bit of background on this, we had the most successful primary election in terms of turnout. And statewide, the overall percentage of voters that utilized absentee voting was seventy-seven percent. And the legislature has made it so that in the future, the Secretary of State cannot mail those absentee ballot requests to every household the same manner as was done in the primary. And so knowing that Tony approached me on behalf of their media group with a possible solution and I agreed and thought it was a great idea, but we wanted to make you aware of it. So I will let him discuss.
Thanks, Jessica. To keep it brief, when it became clear, as Jessica said, that the legislature was taking stuff, taking that power away from Secretary of State, Paul Pay, I reached out to Jessica and said, we'd like to do something to keep it very cheap for the county. We can't do the same kind of thing that the Secretary of State did with the mailing. It would just be too expensive, but right now, we feel like it's something that we can do to aid the citizens of Hardin County to vote safely this November, and we want to do it as cheaply as possible. The discussion I had with Jessica was to do a one-page, eight-by-ten flyer that will be inserted into all of our publications. It's not a perfect solution, but it gets the flyer in every household. They can make copies for other voters in their home or follow instructions on the flyer to download one. We could also make that flyer available through timescitizen.com if that's something that appeals to you. I don't have a specific dollar amount to propose to you, but I would commit to keeping it under seven hundred dollars or, and that's just for design and paper and printing. We would print enough to distribute to the other two publications in the county if they want to do that, too. Jessica did express some interest in that. I can't speak to whether or not they will insert it for free. I've not talked to the other newspapers, but Jessica can work with that on them. If we insert it into the Time Citizen, Active World Journal, and the Advertiser, you're already blanketing Hardin County. That's about fifteen thousand homes. There are some, there will be some overlap into other counties. We'll have to make sure we make that very clear in the copy that this is for Hardin County only, but for us to hit every home in Hardin County, we do go outside it just a touch. I do understand that you want to make sure and work with those other newspapers and that's why we'll commit to printing for them as well. All copy would come directly from Jessica and would, she would have final approval. We also discussed printing on a unique color paper so that she has an easily measurable way to see how effective this effort was to decide if it's something you guys want to pursue again in the future. And on that front, this is a one-time kind of offer. Time Citizen is effectively charging you lower than the cost of the paper and donating more than a thousand dollars in labor. We want to do this because of the pandemic. I don't want to give the impression that we can do it this cheaply on a regular basis for any other purpose, but I do want to make sure that you guys know if there is something like this that comes up in the future or for anything else, we are here and stand ready to help as we can. So that's the crux.
I would, I would add one last. I would add one last thing. When I laid out the, the reasons that we, we can't just do a mailer at the county level here, it's because with the amount of registered voters in our county to hit, all of them would require more than five thousand dollars in postage one way. And the last mailer that they received from the Secretary of State had return postage paid as well, and that would be about ten thousand dollars. And of course, at the county level, we can't absorb that. And throughout the county auditors speaking in our portal, there are five of the most populous counties that have budgets that can do that, and they are doing that. But all of us that are in the rural Iowa demographic, there's no way that any of us can handle it. And so this is a unique way for us to partner with a local resource to help get absentee ballot requests in the hands of voters in a very easy fashion. And like Tony said, the advertiser being their publication that goes to all households. This is great because it doesn't, it doesn't neglect any demographic. It just goes to every household and they can do with it what they will.
Can I comment? Yep. So I, I've had a couple of questions in the last few days because, Jessica, you know that Hope County just announced they're going to do the mass mailing and I was going to ask you today what that kind of cost was, and so I appreciate you having that information. I think what the legislature did was irresponsible, number one. I think then cutting funding to Secretary Page's office was, you know, another irresponsible thing. So I appreciate what you've done to, you know, address this. Tony, I can't thank you enough for looking at the, you know, the public-private partnership and not wanting to reinvent the wheel by something that you already have in place to make sure we get, you know, as many voices heard coming into the November third general election. So I do appreciate it and I see beyond the partisan politics with this issue.
Yeah, I don't think it is a partisan issue.
No.
Well, it was at the Capitol, obviously.
Yeah.
We'll just call it what it is.
Everything is there.
Yeah. So Jessica, what, do we need to give you permission? This seems like this is your department, so, or is this an informational thing?
Nope, this is informational only because I don't really need anybody's blessing to do it. And quite honestly, Tony and I discussed that his publication could do this even without my blessing as a service to the public. It's just that we wanted to make it clear that the amount of county funds we were going to be expending on this would be minimal because of the generous donation and that we can't necessarily count on that in the future for anything else that we're doing. This is a one-time offering because of the situation with COVID and us not knowing what the future holds.
Jessica, I have one more question that popped in my mind. Strategically, when would you propose sending, putting this into circulation? When's the best time, do you think?
Actually, Tony and I have discussed doing it by the end of this month and a lot of the other counties are doing the same because the more we get in early, the better we can enter them into the system and deal with that influx, which will be great. I mean, enormous is the right word. And to get those into the system before we even have ballots would be incredibly beneficial. So that's why the purpose of mailing it out before we even have our ballots finalized is of utmost importance.
Angela, does that make you happy, too? All right. I thought, I saw like a little grin there and I just wanted to make sure, so.
It's a great idea and I do appreciate Tony's offer and it's a good thing to, for the two of you to work together on that. And it's, it'll be good for the citizens of the county, too. And I, I hope most of the other counties participate in something like that, too.
So Tony, are you expanding to other counties now? Uh, no, I think it's
They might.
Get out there.
They are welcome to call me, but they will have to pay.
Oh, we got that quote. No, I think, I think it's a great program and yes, you do get out to all the residents of Hardin County as far as I'm aware through the advertiser and it's a great way to get it there. So thank you.
Now I'm glad you guys see the benefit.
Thanks, Tony.
But I
Thank you, guys.
I agree with BJ that, yeah, this is in Jessica's realm.
Right.
I think, I think it's a good move. Any other comments? So I will move on to accept the resignation of Veterans Affairs Commissioner, Commission Member. Dave Mitchell has moved on and sent a resignation letter unto us.
I'd make a motion to accept and approve the resignation of Dave Mitchell from the Veterans Affairs Commission.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All favors say aye.
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 Motion carries. Um, I put this on here just in case we did want to appoint, fill out vacancy. I don't have any names.
Me either.
I, I have a handful of names. I recall when we appointed Dave, that maybe instead of going out and, you know, advertising and stuff, I think we could probably look at our files and recall a few of those people or all of those people and see if anybody's interested.
Bernie sent an email yesterday. Bernie, Bernie's on here, isn't he? He said he was going to be. Don't forget to mention him. Bernie is not on, okay. So I talked to Bernie. He was going to advertise for this position again. I agree, we're filling a vacancy. We, we don't have to advertise if we don't want to. Daryl is, I don't have to put you on the spot, but that'd be the same answer as Conservation Board, like Conservation Board member.
I think if they just make a written request, that's all you would need from anybody.
Okay. So I don't, I don't know if we do want to advertise or Bernie does want to advertise. That's, that's their commission.
Right. If he wants continuity of operations, if he advertises and posts for it, it might be a while. So my suggestion would be you want to have additional dialogue with Bernie and find out if he's okay with going back to the applicants that we had, you know, a year or so ago and pick, and look at that pool. If you don't believe that, if he and his commission don't think that pool is strong enough or, you know, has enough applicants, then maybe go for the advertising and posting.
Okay. And like Daryl said, all they have to do is have a written
Right.
Request.
Yep.
So at this point, I don't have a vacancy to fill.
Right.
And I will move to the next one. Tax abatements, Ellsworth Neighborhood Investment Group.
After conferring with the county attorney Meyer and I think everything's been resolved along with Treasurer Ike Meyer, I'd make a motion to approve the tax abatements in the bundle with the owner's name being Ellsworth Neighborhood Investment Group LLC.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just appreciate the patience and, and, you know, the dialogue. It took a while, but things were resolved.
Any other discussion?
There, there will be one additional unit that's not part of the fifteen that are on your list. So that'll be on next week, but it's part of the overall agreement that we made on this compromise with Ellsworth.
Okay.
Can we explain what the, why we're compromising?
Yeah, I
It sounds, it sounds kind of brief otherwise.
Yeah, yeah. You're walking away from money. I always explain one. So you have, on, on the agenda here, you have fifteen units of sixteen that are part of a condominium project that Ellsworth a neighborhood group or investment group undertook. And back in two thousand eighteen, the entire project was assessed, each individual condominium was individually assessed because it would become its own parcel. And there were twenty units, I believe, at the time. And the assessment was based on what the anticipated value would be upon completion. I think there was some expectation that they would be completed within the year. And not all the units were, and so sixteen of them were reassessed. Maybe, maybe just fifteen were reassessed, but sixteen became part of sort of the dispute here as to what was, what would be a fair assessment, does a fair tax responsibility? So they were reassessed and the adjustments weren't made until now, but will be made now. But they did pay full freight in the fall payment for that tax assessment that was July. And so based on what they have paid and what credit they will be given with these abatements, we've compromised on them still owing three thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars for these sixteen units. They did pay that. And so you have fifteen of these sixteen, because that sixteenth unit, unit one oh four was, was kind of an oddball and it didn't make this cut here. The paperwork still needs to be done on that sixteenth unit, but we've got the figures already. It'll be on next week. So it's just an adjustment on, on the assessments. They paid full freight. They would give credit. They still owe a little bit. They already paid that. There's some other properties that they still dispute, but they don't relate to this particular project and that is not part of this, you know, these abatements that are on the agenda today.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Are you no more? Roll call.
BJ?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one appropriations resolution.
Excuse me. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the appropriations resolution which would appropriate the remaining fifty percent of the budgeted amount to various departments in the county's budget. It does not include the ones that are budgets that include health insurance. These are, I'll just read them off. The Health Board, General Assistance, the Clerk of Court, Pioneer Cemetery, General Services Courthouse, General Services Miscellaneous, General Services County Office Building, DHS, Mental Health Administration, Chemical Dependency Insurance, Non-Department Eighty-nine, Debt Service, the Interfund Operating Transfers, and the Non-Department Ninety-nine.
Can you clarify your motion again? I thought that was a big motion.
My actual motion would then be to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one appropriations resolution which appropriates the remaining fifty percent of the budgeted amount.
As presented.
As presented.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
That's where I should have read off the departments. I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? Are you no more? Roll call.
Renee?
Aye.
BJ?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have the Auditor's Monthly Report.
I'd make a motion to approve Auditor Laura's monthly report as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All favors say aye.
Aye.
There is next is Recorder's Monthly Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the Recorder's Monthly Report for the month of June.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the Sheriff's Monthly Report.
I'd make a motion approving Sheriff Daniels' monthly report as presented.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I have is change of status, Auditor's Office.
I'd make a motion approving the change of status for Angelo Silvy, who is election deputy for the salary to be sixty-five percent of the elected official, which would be on the The change is going from sixty-four to sixty-five percent. That'd be effective retroactively to July first, twenty twenty.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Congratulations. Any other discussion? Are you none? All favors say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now I have to change the status, Sheriff's Office.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Matthew Vogler. It's a hire effective July twenty-third, twenty twenty at the hourly rate of sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents in the communications.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All favors say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is COVID nineteen update. Thomas.
Good morning, Thomas. Good morning. How are you? Oh, BJ.
Good.
So a couple of things on the COVID front. Number one, and I just had the call with Dr. Padati from Iowa Department of Public Health. There is a lot of discussion going on right now about doing serology testing and we're getting that from EMS and from law enforcement in wanting to do serology. There's been some questions about the validity of that and the efficacy of that. And just the conversation with Dr. Padati a few minutes ago is that it is a very, very solid test. They're not ready yet to say whether or not, it's very solid in that if you have antibodies, you have the antibodies. But right now, the research is headed toward that you at least have immunity with the antibodies for probably several months. But they're also working down the road and looking that that may be from CDC, that may be guidance in whether or not if you have antibodies, then you may not be, you may not need to be isolated or quarantined in the future. So we're, the EOC staff has been looking at that. We were kind of hesitant on that. We'll probably talk about that again on next Monday. And moving forward with that, I've been working with Rocky Rees with Greenbelt Home Care Public Health and we've been having some more conversations about moving that ball down the road more for the agencies in the county. Second thing is that we met yesterday, I believe it was, this is what I'm going to say. So I think it's Tuesday that we met with the judicial side of the House, Judge Haney, the associates, I forget, it was Justin and there was another one named?
Just Johnson.
Maybe.
Johnson.
Yeah, okay. And then the court of court. They are ready to open on the thirteenth. That's their, that's when the judicial side of the House is opening the business. And so I've had a couple of Zoom meetings with them and making sure that the courthouse is ready as well as they're ready on the third floor. The only thing that we have left is to officially open the courthouse. And my recommendation to you as a board would be that we go ahead and open that courthouse officially, but we still use the same process that we're using now, that we encourage appointments and that we still use the card system that we're using. and that we still use the card system that we're using to be able to maintain the number of people that are at one office. That's the way we maintain the social distance in the rotunda area. And then we're also, Kerry Callaway was going to be working with Tina Clark to institute that same process with the court system. We had that discussion yesterday with them, they were not completely clear of how that really worked, but it's working very well in maintaining the number of people at a window upstairs and the number of people waiting in the hallway. So if you open the courthouse, we'll need to do a press, press thing and encourage that the doors are open. But that, we still encourage appointments, and then if you come in without an appointment, that you still have to wait, and you may wait a longer time, because we still kind of may allow so many people in that area due to the social distancing and due to the size of the area. So that's the first item that I would bring to you in the COVID world is thinking about making a form of opening the courthouse with, still encouraging the appointments and using, continuing to use of a card system to maintain the number of people upstairs with your offices. Do you want to talk about that, or do you want to, want me to move on to another item?
Oh, let's go to the next item. I'm, I'm just, thank you.
Okay. We have a department head meeting at one today too, so.
All right, the next item is that we have discussed this and discussed this and looked at different options. And we decided at the beginning that we were not going to be doing annual temperatures on people walking through the doorway. But it still is encouraged that we have some type of temperature check on individuals coming into the courthouse. And so I've done some research, and then Matt Jones with the IT Department, a couple of weeks ago, gave me information on a automatic fever detection system. It is a pedestal, and that's what I gave, gave you this morning. And it does two things. One is that instead of taking a forehead temperature or a facial temperature, it's actually got the little yellow device on the side, so the person walks up to it, it takes up about two square feet. The pedestal, you walk up to it, you put your wrist to the temperature device, they're finding that the wrist temperature is less influenced by the outside temperatures. So if I'm out, if I walk into my office over here in the sun, my forehead is probably going to be warm. So they're finding that the wrist temperature is much more accurate in all extremes. So it goes from the twenty below to the hundred and five that they're supposed to have today. And then it also scans a face. So it can be used in two ways. Some of the facilities that this is going into currently is that they're using, number one, in a way to recognize who's coming in as far as employees. So they're using it as a facial recognition, and it's a way that the employees are coming in and it recognizes the face. The other is, is that it just simply, when you get your temperature, it also has two cameras, and it takes your picture so that it equates the temperature with the face. And then Judge Haney and the other judges yesterday talked about that we, they still thought that we should have a sign-in system so that we don't just have a face and the temperature, that we actually have a name at the same time. And so Kerry was very upfront with that also, having a sign-in, you know, even if you're going upstairs to court. Right now, their system allows them that they have the appointments, they also write the names down of who doesn't have an appointment, but who is a walk-in, so they write the name and the time slot. This would allow us to have the temperature, the face, and the name to go back and do contact tracing in the event that we have somebody that tests positive that has been in the courthouse. And I say in the event, because it's not if, it's when. Several courthouses already, I think it was yesterday, that I understood that Rendy Center, Rendy County, they closed their courthouse because they had exposure in the courthouse. They had a positive case in the courthouse, so they closed the courthouse.
And they actually break it.
They did too.
Oh, did they?
Yeah. Yeah. We have problems. I will tell you that we, we believe we have the processes in place where we don't have to go close the whole courthouse for a week. We should be able to limit it to a department and limit it to maybe forty-eight hours. So we don't have to have all the houses closed for a week.
So looking at one of the, one of these devices, what was it, two thousand hours plus installation?
Yeah, so the install. So first of all, this device will stand alone, doesn't need to be installed for anything. It just sits there and takes pictures, but power source, it does say power source. But.
Computer connections.
But the other is that the install is, we're, I talked to Mike yesterday, and we need to wait to come back, come back. But we're also talking to Jody about running network cable out there so that we have a place to store this data and maintain a larger quantity of data on the network. So that if we need to, we can go back and pull that information for our contact tracing process. And so the install is depending on, and it, it depends on how much work we have to do on the install. But we've got very qualified IT people who have been doing stellar in this process in getting equipment and networking and everything to get us where we're at right now and being able to maintain Zoom off, off-site work and all of that, so that would minimize that cost. I did check with Homeland Security. I got an email from Katie Waters, who is the Division Chief for Recovery Division under the Public Assistance, and it wrote that under the Public Assistance. So it really will come down to you guys as the county, because it'll be on the county side of the courthouse of approving the expenditure of two thousand dollars to put this in. Then it'll go under the Public Assistance, and it'll be reimbursed at maybe just two or ten, it depends on how this all falls out. Nobody really knows exactly where that reimbursement thing's going to be yet.
Would we be looking at just one of these units, or three of these units, one for the Unit Services Building, one for the jail?
We didn't talk about that.
I think that the department head doing two, I mean, I have, I have a few other questions, yes.
We were really just talking about the courthouse initially, but, and when you talk about the people coming into the jail and coming to the, they're coming into the Sheriff's Office over there and to the administrative building. That would be, yeah, hadn't even processed that, but go ahead and do it.
No, I just think that's, that was one of the things I'd written down is, I, I'm fairly certain that, that our one o'clock meeting today had more questions. Yep, they don't get brought up.
And then timeline of getting these machines.
Probably several weeks. They're finally getting them out. This gentleman that I have the card for, he was at Carroll County yesterday when I called him. And they're, they're just now getting them in, so they're out, starting to install them. And the note that's handwritten on your paper is Decatur County Courthouse and Urbandale School, I'm sorry. Decatur County Hospital and Urbandale School is installed. They've already, they're working on doing that installation.
Done. Okay. It's hard, harder numbers, I guess, moving forward, but I think it sounds like a great plan. At this time. And I don't want to drop the idea.
No, not at all.
Yeah, and this, this really is the, this is probably the cheapest. I've had folks everywhere from this two thousand, which was the cheapest one that came in. The others are five thousand up to sixteen thousand dollars.
Shoot, a commercial hand, or hand sanitizing station, for someone for eight hundred to two thousand dollars.
Yeah, no kidding.
So I look at these electronic equipment that, you know, could help with the contract, contact tracing part of it. We've seen that the follow-ups of contract, contact tracing have been horrible. And so, yeah. My only real concern is, and I'm sure we'll hear this, is what's going to happen to that facial recognition data? You know, that, you know, who gets that, who doesn't get that? Do I have a right to not have my picture taken?
So that question was brought up to Judge Haney.
Yeah, and I was going to ask.
Yesterday. And they're pretty much like, this is happening in every place else. And, and the other is, is that if you really think about this, and this came up at another discussion, is that if you think about it, your face has already been captured as soon as you walked in the door, you're on the camera system. I can see that, the Sheriff's Office can see that, security can see that, multiple people can see that. As you walk through the courthouse, there's probably five or six other times that your face is on camera, and we can go back and capture that.
Yeah. In, in full disclosure, I'm not against it, I, we just, there's a certain part of our population that
Yes.
is concerned with that, but it's part of, part of the cost of doing business.
And it also would be, I mean, that also would be my concern, and it would need to be a secured file that we only access for contact tracing, or in the event that something, some other bad thing happens. We need to figure out who we're going to go.
So once this gets done, it would be a public record, correct? So would you open that, I mean, we would have to make sure that.
We, that's a Daryl question, but due to policies, I think we.
You got that wrote down.
Before you said it, I was thinking I would recall the AG to see if this would be considered a public record or not.
Or is this part of our courthouse security plan that is then protected? Yeah, I, I, I just need that answer too.
Yes, that's, that's, as you spring up public record, I think by policy and procedure, we can make it part of our security plan that is not public record. Because you have that right, that for certain pieces of your security, cannot be opened to public record.
If you don't know the answer to this, but if basically, goal number one would be turn away the symptomatic infected. What if someone's asymptomatic, but the system, because of their facial recognition, knows that they're a carrier? Are the, is the alarm going to go off? I mean, is it going to tie to any other database where
No.
we know this person's a carrier, but they're asymptomatic?
No.
And they can spread, even though they don't have a temperature?
No.
Is that in the future? What's that?
So you got big ideas.
Right, I mean, this just starts somewhere, and then the roots grow, and then it all ties together into the web. Have you heard anything about?
No.
Okay.
No.
Personally, I wouldn't think that we would be interested in that, and I'm wondering why would you even keep the data more than like two weeks?
Two to three weeks.
Right, because it's not going to take that long for.
Right, because we only, we only, right now, we're keeping records for, I think it's twenty days or something. We put, we added a little bit of days on there for the log of people that are coming through just to make sure that we have that data. But then Kerry and her staff are destroying that record every twenty, every twenty days, and I think the same thing, I don't, I'm not an IT guy, but we probably could make it so that it just automatically deletes that a certain number of days.
Right.
Anything, anything, I mean, other than that, the other is we just know on, every day you go back and delete twenty days backwards.
Right, I mean, because we don't want to have to have
No.
extra storage.
Right, because the, the picture and the temperature and all of that's going to take up storage space, so it would be becoming them on us and not using expensive data storage for that purpose.
Automatically purged, like you said, in a certain.
Yeah, I think we'll have some more ideas with the firm head meeting and everybody else.
Sure.
I think it's good dialogue though.
Yes, okay. A lot of good information.
Yep. So I will not be at the department head meeting, I have another meeting that I have to attend.
So you all have those answers for us, I got it.
Well, and I don't have those answers, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a discussion.
Right.
Get them written down, we'll get them back, that's, we discuss on the Monday. We have a hour, a two-hour meeting every Monday for the operations, so.
Okay, yeah, just keep us in touch with any more information to get on this.
Okay, all right.
Good thinking.
Thank you, Thomas.
Was there anything else for the update? Numbers still rising?
But numbers are rising, but recoveries are.
Right.
Right, so.
Yeah, let me take that. The numbers continue to rise. And part of that is, but the other is the recoveries are increasing. The number of hospitalizations are still going down, the number of deaths typically are still going down. So even though we raised this side up, it's in the populations that are not as vulnerable to the death of serious injury, serious illness, as we have at the beginning of this. So if the numbers go up and we're still, we still encourage people to be self-responsible and wear a mask, stay home. I'm still, we still are getting reports of people that are testing. So if you go and get a test, then there's a reason why you wouldn't got a test typically. Now, the people that are going to get a test, because it's required for you to have a test before you go for surgery, those people, I understand that they're not isolating at home, but if you think you've been exposed, and then you're going to get a test to find out if you have it, then the rule still says that you should stay at home and isolate until you get the results. And then if you're positive, you continue to isolate for another ten to fourteen days. What we're finding is that people are going out, getting tested because they think they might have been exposed, they might have it, be asymptomatic, and then they're still going about their day of business. And that just, it, it just blows my mind that we have, have that going on. I will be sending out, I got another piece of education stuff in my file this morning, my email this morning. And it talks about the purpose of masks, because there's a lot of discussion about masks. And we've had this discussion with Taylor and some of the secondary roads. So first of all, just to highlight, the paper mask or the cloth mask is really just a courtesy thing that if I think I might have something, I wear this mask so that when I talk, when I talk, whatever, I'm not spreading that to anybody else. The N ninety-five and up is for me to be protected from you. So if I'm going into something, into somebody's house, so as a medical examiner investigator, if I'm going to somebody that's positive, what we know is positive for COVID, that I am wearing that N ninety-five if I'm on an EMS crew. I'm wearing an N ninety-five in until I know that I don't need that N ninety-five. And then from there, you get into the higher-end respirators and the Pappers, which are all healthcare. So people need to understand the mask, and even an N ninety-five. So I've seen both sides of this, I've seen the N ninety-five that has the exhalation port on it, and I've seen the N ninety-five that doesn't have the exhalation. If you're wearing an N ninety-five, again, that is only for your protection. And so if you're wearing this N ninety-five out and you have an exhalation valve on it, and you think you're protecting anybody, you're not. Because your exhalation is going out. Because your exhalation is going out through a valve that just lets the air go out. So we really, and I probably can make a note of that and we can do some type of press thing and try and put something out about. Correct use of masks and what the contention of masks are.
And it begins.
I need a simple demonstration video of each kind, so people understand that those exhalation valves are just that. To allow your respirations to be as normal as possible while masked while protecting you. But you could be, uh, positive for cold flu, COVID, whatever, and that particular is still gonna exit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would. Wear a mask over your nose.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, proper use, proper, proper masking is a problem across the board. And so, yeah, uh, I'll look at that with Rocky and we'll try to get some, uh, public information out there and all the media. We got a friendly media guy that wants to work partnerships, so maybe we can do some joint graphics and information.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Thomas.
Well, from there, let's unmute all and ask for public comments. Uh, anybody should be able to unmute themselves if any public comments were, they have for us. Not hearing any, I can go to other business?
I just have one thing that, um, I, I know I posted it online yesterday, but, um, through the CAREERS Act, uh, I know that there's a lot of parents. Uh, and caretakers and guardians in the county of school-aged children, uh, pre-K through twelfth grade that, um. Are on free or reduced lunch, they will be getting a card in the mail.
They don't have any comments from me.
And so if you had two children on free or reduced lunch in a Harden County school district between July fourteenth and twenty-first. You can expect to get a debit card in the mail. And it'll have a certain dollar amount to utilize for groceries and other food provisions for your children. So it's not a scam, it's a real thing, um, and if you have two kids, you'll get two cards. If you have five kids, you'll get five individual cards. So it's not a scam, uh, and it'll come in a pretty vague envelope from what the Iowa Department of Education said. So if you get something in the mail, please open your mail. Um, and I think it's a good resource for, you know, our school-aged kids that are on free or reduced lunch in the county. And I think I saw the, the, um, basic payments, three hundred and seven dollars. So if you have, you know, it's three hundred and seven dollars per child. So that could really help with some of our food insecurities, you know, during the summer months. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that, don't throw that envelope away that, you know, you don't know what is in it. It's not a hoax, it's not, it's not something like that, so that's all I have, Lance.
Good to know.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, let's go back to public comments. Pauline?
Yes, I, I have a few, um, I think what Jessica and Tony said, I think are, um, is a very good idea. Um, you know, there's like a lot of people that, uh, like my husband and I, we don't get a paper. So, um, I think that's a good idea to do that because, um, we both have underlying health issues. So, uh, that would be a good idea, so we don't have to travel into town, go into the courthouse to, um. You know, get the registrations and stuff like that. So I just wanted to recommend and say that, uh, I think that's a very good idea that, um, Tony and Jessica have. So I just wanted to add to that. And, um, then I wanted to ask about this pickup. Didn't Megan get a brand-new Ford pickup for the weed, um, commission when she was? I, I'm not sure if that's the right word to use, commission or whatever, but when, didn't she get a brand-new Ford pickup when she was on that? So I guess I'm asking why we're getting another pickup? Couldn't we use that brand-new Ford pickup that Megan had gotten?
There were two pickups, Taylor, you wanna explain where the pickups are and how they're being utilized?
How many?
Those ones?
Me.
All of them, yeah, well, this one's meant for a snow pile, so that, those, that truck can't be used for this without dismantling the whole spray system. I don't think that's what we want either. Pauline, we probably have fifteen, twenty pickups, I'm not sure the exact number off the top of my head, and it's just time to replace one. We got four sitting against the fence that will never run again. So, yeah, we'd like to replace one of those four.
Oh, okay, I, I understand. And then I was, um, wondering, I thought, um, maybe it would be a good idea to advertise that position for, um, Veterans Affairs. There might be a lot of veterans out there that might, um, want that job or whatever. So, I don't know, I guess that's just my opinion. Um, you can do with that whatever you think, but thought maybe that was a good idea. And then, um, I guess I, I'm kind of really, and I guess I don't understand this or get this. Why we did a tax abatement for, um, those condos at Ellsworth? Um, the rest of us all pay taxes, how come the person whoever owns those condos or whatever? I guess I don't see why they're not paying taxes, I mean, everybody else pays taxes, so why wouldn't they pay taxes?
They were, they, they are still paying taxes on it. Uh, what they're abating is the fact that these were taxed as a fully finished unit and they are not. So they reassessed the value of the unit, there's still being taxes being paid on them, just not at the volume of a finished unit.
Okay, so will they always pay taxes on them then, even as they're finished?
Yes.
Finished or unfinished, there's still taxes, it's just the value of what they would pay.
Okay, I guess I didn't quite understand that. And, um. And then about the cam, the ca, the temperature thing and the camera with our pictures or whatever. If we, if we're, if we have cameras and we're on camera already all over the courthouse. I guess I'm thinking, why do we need another camera that's gonna take our picture then? When, um, we are already on camera at the courthouse?
It's there to take your temperature and put your face to your temperature. And, and it tracks the person. In case you, if you are infected, if somebody else comes in infected, they wanna know who to notify during this process.
Okay, I, I understand that, but, um.
The ones throughout the courthouse are more for security purposes, like if someone, um, was at the treasurer's office and.
Left their keys.
Yeah, well, left their keys, or if they're threatening employees or, or even, uh, for insurance purposes, like a slip and fall. We have a record of that as to how it actually happened and is it county responsibility or is it personal liability, whatever? Those are more for security purposes, they don't, um, link that to anything. It's just you can go back and look at it as far as what hap, possibly happened. The one at the door is gonna have a picture of your face, it's gonna, uh, register your temperature along with that. And say, four days later after you've been in the courthouse, we find out there's a case of COVID in the courthouse. We can go back to see, this will be a time-recorded type system also. So we would be able to go back and see who is actually here and, and we need to notify that person that you may have been exposed to COVID. So it's two totally different kinds of systems.
Okay, and then.
You might have to have somebody from IT looking at four days worth of footage, eight hours worth of footage.
Right.
Four days, that's gonna tie up a person unnecessarily when you've got this system that has already stored the data.
Okay, and then.
And we'll have a name with it, I mean, if the courthouse, the system's upstairs, there would be no name, we might not even know who it is, um, in order to contact them. But, but this, we'd be able to, you know, have a name with it, so we know who to contact.
Okay, and then I understood the most that that would cost us then would be two thousand dollars for that.
Right, for the, for one building, yes.
No, cost of the machine is two thousand dollars plus installation and then the other wiring we made. And then we would get rebated back through time, we would have to front it and then there's a percentage back that we would get.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
True.
And then, um, I did kind of agree with, um, I'm sorry, I don't know his name, the COVID guy that spoke with, um. Opening up the courthouse, cause the governor kinda has opened up everything, so, um. I guess I feel like our courthouse kinda should be opened up too. Um, that's just kind of my input. And then, this is probably a Taylor question, is Taylor still there?
Yep.
Okay, Taylor, um, you've got weight limits on two ninetieth street. Um, do you know which street I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think you're talking about the, uh, it's not the South Fork, but it's the bridge right next to it, right?
Yeah, it's, well, it's right after you get out of the quarry and you make a. God, I gotta position myself.
I know, I know what you're talking about.
Okay, anyway, it's on the, our gravel road that you have to go on before you turn over. And a lot of trucks use that road to go, you know, across to the county. Well, you've got weight limits on that, and the other day, I got the license plate, but can't read fast enough to get the number or anything. But anyway, a great big huge semi, one of those semis that, you know, it, they're, what do I wanna say? They're boxes yellow, so it, you know, carries and holds a lot of tonnage with rock and stuff. And, uh, they were going over it, cause we met another one when we were coming back. So those trucks are what, are semis, excuse me, my voice is kinda going too. Um, you know, they're way over that weight limit and they still just keep going over that little bridge all the time. So, um, I'm sure they could read the signs just as well as we can and they're Harden County trucks. So how do we keep them from? Um, going over the bridge and obeying the law, I guess.
Yep, so those, that's enforced by motor vehicles, not enforced by the sheriff at all, after he caught in the act. I don't know, it's a problem we have on all our bridges, they can post it.
So just so we clarify, when she said Harden County trucks, she's not assuming Harden County employees.
I disagree.
Yeah. We don't have the yellow.
No, but we don't, no side doors.
We have one million of them.
White, white, yeah.
Yeah. It's an excellent point, Pauline, and I don't think any county's ever found the answer.
I just thought I'd bring it up.
The longer people respect those, the longer your bridge will live.
Well, that, that's what I was thinking, you know, the longer, you know, we could take care of our bridges if everybody, you know, respected it. And, um, I'm sure, you know, the signs are posted in good places, you know, that everybody can read it. And, uh, I just thought, well, you know, we could just save on our bridges and stuff if, uh, everybody would obey it. I know that road gets used a lot, cause, um, you know, in between the counties and stuff. But, uh, just wanted to mention it. And that's all I have.
Alright, well, thank you, and we will move on then. Next I have is German, unless you have any other business?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Good, moving, seconded, any discussion? And then all favors that.
Aye.
Aye, or carries or adjourned?